Good evening, this is the Board of School Directors Voting Meeting for June 16th, 2020. To those panelists, please remember the following operational features. If you are using a phone, star six is to mute or unmute your phone, and star nine is to raise your hand. To everyone, we ask that you, unless you're speaking, to mute your mic until you're called upon to limit the background noise. At this point in time, I will turn it over to the President and Board Secretary to begin the meeting.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bennen. So I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order, and we'll get started with a roll call vote.
Mrs. McWhorter? Here. Mr. Uptegrove?
Here.
Mr. Hemingway? Mr. Hemingway, I couldn't hear you?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Duroff?
Let me see if she's showing up anywhere. Okay, I can pull her over, hold on.
Okay.
Ms. Duroff? I can see her.
Ms. Duroff, we're doing roll call now? I think I see you.
She has to turn her mic on.
She doesn't look like she's muted. I don't know if we can confirm that that's her. I will, I'll move on. Mrs. Hogan?
Could you note the time? It's 7:05. In your notes,
Okay.
that we physically see her, then we need to verify later as we continue.
Okay, it does look like it's muted now too, as well. Ms. Hogan?
Present.
Mrs. Denon?
Here.
Mr. Brophy?
Here.
Ms. Nyman?
Here.
Mr. Foose?
Here.
Okay, I think all are present. We're just waiting to confirm that Ms. Duroff has communications.
All right, let's, in the meantime, go ahead with our Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. That apply United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So first, we have an announcement of previous executive session. So the Board met on June 3rd for 60 minutes to discuss personnel and legal issues related to employee contracts. Next, we have public comment period number one, and I did receive notice that we have four people signed up. So I will go ahead and read our statement and then have them go in the order that they had signed up. "On behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. Welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us with making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyertown Area School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASD Board Policy 006. This document is available at the meeting and on the BASD website. Participants properly registered on the sign-up sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public comment period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. All statements, inquiries, and comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question Board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Dr. Bennen or a member of his staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes, and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our Board and Committee meetings, and we post them on the Board Docs website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner, and use those materials respectfully and responsibly. Thank you. And first, we have Ms. Carrie Palmer signed up.
Ms. Palmer?
Hi, good evening. My name is Carrie Palmer. I'm a resident of Upper Potters Grove Township, and I'm also an educator in the district at Middle School West. I'm here this evening to offer thoughts on the district's drafted position statement. "To our Black students and families, all our students and families of color, and our employees of color, know that we see you, we stand by you, we acknowledge the burdens of the systems that surround us, and most importantly, know that we love you and value you. On June 1st, in the wake of George Floyd's death, Happer or Horsham School District wrote a letter to share these sentiments with families. And when I look at the drafted statement from this district, I do not feel seen, I do not feel supported, and I do not feel valued. And I can only imagine that if this particular statement is released, the students and families of color in our community will feel similarly. Based on goals inspired by our values, we strive to maintain a positive, safe learning environment. As a No Place For Hate district, we are committed to sending a clear unified message that all students and staff have a place where they belong. To make these values visible, to honor that commitment, we need to specifically acknowledge the pain that people of color in our community and in our district are feeling, and provide resources to cope with that trauma. If we truly are committed to cultivating an exceptional innovative learning community that enables all students to succeed, we must recognize and rally against the systems of injustice and inequality that pose significant barriers to that success. In order to aim to enable all students to succeed in a changing world, a world that is full of many people of different races and backgrounds, people who face injustices because of their race, people who need allies to dismantle systems that continue to hurt and disenfranchise people of color, we need to acknowledge race, racism, and the destruction and devastation that it causes. Our students, our families of color, our staff members of color are especially vulnerable right now. Individuals, corporations, and school districts have wrapped their arms around the Black community and are taking action to ensure that the world within their immediate sphere of influence is a safe, affirming, welcoming space for people of color. Actions, they're taking actions to let people of color in their communities know unequivocally that they are valued and cared for. And more importantly than simply making a statement that expresses care and affirmation of the Black students and families in this moment is your plan for the future. How will you ensure that we strive toward maintaining an actively anti-racist stance in our work as a district? How will you educate staff to ensure that our policies, practices, and curriculum are not unintentionally harmful to students of color? How will you hold space for people of color to be acknowledged, heard, and valued on a daily basis? As elected officials, the school boards of Perkyomen Valley and North Penn consider it their responsibility to issue a statement condemning ongoing acts of violence against people of color. I hope you do the same. More importantly, I hope you consider it your responsibility as community members to say to your neighbors of color, "We see you, we stand by you, we acknowledge the burdens of the systems that surround us, we value you, and you matter to us."
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Mark Magro.
Mr. Magro, hold on one second while I pull you over. Mr. Magro?
Yes, hi. Hello, my name is Mark Magro. I'm a resident of the East Penn School District area and a teacher at Middle School West. Thank you, Dr. Bennen, good evening, members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I do not live in the district, but I felt compelled to speak with you all tonight for my love for this community that has welcomed me with open arms since I began working here seven years ago. Regarding the agenda topic of drafting a district position statement on the current protests, I wrote the Board an email earlier in the month vocalizing the importance I feel making such a statement has in our community. I'm encouraged that the Board is considering the statement and realizes that staying silent on the issue is a poor message, and that we, as a school district, need to be vocal if we are to fulfill the core values we have established for ourselves. However, after reading the proposed draft of the statement including this meeting's agenda, I can't help but feel disappointed. We cannot dismantle what we refuse to name, and the proposed statement avoids acknowledging directly the topic of systemic racism that is at the forefront of our national conversation right now, specifically racism affecting Black members of our community. It's hard to take the Board's statement as a clear unified message when it does not specify the group of humans being most affected, instead putting racism in with 11 other forms of discrimination. The streets in cities across the world are filled with people marching for the recognition of the humanity of Black lives. Why hesitate to acknowledge this? I can't imagine the emotional toll on our Black students after months of being separated from their friends, watching the national conversation unfold on the news and social media as to whether or not the statement that their lives matter can be considered controversial. I hope for our Black students, it's been encouraging to see members of the community vocalize their support with a peaceful protest on June 2nd, as well as hundreds of other communities, corporations, content creators, and countless others echo again and again and again that, yes, you do matter. Yeah, with this statement being proposed, the institution that they spend several hours a day at, the institution that is charged with caring for their educational as well as their emotional needs, the institution that plays one of the largest roles in their lives to prepare them for the future, refuses to acknowledge them as a group that needs our support, refuses to address the issue of social injustice by name, and fails to specify any steps that can be taken to promote change. So I implore you again tonight, please, let the community know that the Boyertown Area School District is one that stands with its Black students, its Black staff members, its Black members of the community, and therefore stands for all of us united in saying we will not tolerate racism or social injustice in our schools. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. And next, I apologize ahead of time trying to pronounce the name. Ms. Amanda Rawnson? Rownson?
Yep, that's correct, Rawnson. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Amanda Rawnson. Can you all hear me? Am I on? Okay.
Yes.
Um, thank you. I have been teaching Spanish in the district for the last eight years, and I will be teaching at Bash come the fall. But I'm speaking to express my concern about the draft as well. And the statement, while I really applaud you all for creating this statement and coming together, I feel that this is an opportunity that will be missed if we're not specific in supporting, as Mr. Magro said, specifically our Black community members. If we continue the statement as is, I feel like the perception of it is going to be a negative perception, and I don't think that that's the direction that the district has been working so hard to go towards. And I think it's a huge step backwards, and I think it could be made a little bit better. The statement that we have now, it's just regurgitating our mission statement, our vision statement, and it mentions what we do in the program for No Place For Hate, but it doesn't, it's missing a very crucial piece of information that could change the perception of how Boyertown is viewed countywide, multi-counties, and I just think that it could be better, and I wish that we could take a look at it a little bit more. So I really appreciate the hard work that you guys did to put into this, and I appreciate you giving me the time to speak, but I think it really could be a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, and we have one last person signed up for public comment period number one, and that is Ms. Angela Bellino.
Ms. Bellino?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. So my name is Angela Bellino. I'm a Boyertown Area School District parent, as well as a Middle School East employee who lives in New Hanover Township. I know this year has been full of challenges, and as a school board and school district that you have worked tirelessly to overcome them. As a parent and school district employee, I appreciate all that was and continues to be done to support students and staff during the COVID-19 pandemic. However, our work is not done. The trauma of recent events and their connection to American history affects all of us. As our country collectively mourns the deaths of Blacks Americans and processes the impact of generations of systemic racism, it is critical to consider our path forward. Talking about race can be uncomfortable, but we cannot allow that discomfort to silence us. These conversations are not reserved for students and educators of color, but for students and educators in predominantly white schools too. Schools have an obligation to serve the students who attend them. At this moment, I believe that serving our students means openly and assertively affirming our stance as an anti-racist institution, condemning all types of violence against Black individuals and people of color in America, offering resources for both education and traumatized individuals, and committing to reconsider how our policies, curricula, and professional development can be updated to ensure that our attitudes and actions are consistently anti-racist as a standard. We are responsible for helping students build their capacity to understand and to confront systemic racism so that they are, as our vision states, enabled to succeed in a changing world. My concern is that although well-intentioned, the current draft of the district position statement could be construed as a dismissive "all lives matter" summation of existing policy rather than a decisive commitment to do better. I respectfully ask you to reconsider the verbiage of the current draft and to instead use language that explicitly denounces racism and specifically identifies the ways in which Boyertown Area School District will lead by example. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And that was our last person who had signed up for this public comment period. So we will move to minutes. So this is the approval of the minutes for the May 19th Board of School Directors meeting. Can I get a motion?
Hogan motions.
I'll second.
All right, I have Ms. Hogan motion, and Mr. Uptegrove with a second. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Otherwise, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Mrs. McWhorter? Yes. Mr. Uptegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Sure.
Ms. Duroff? I'm still unable to hear Ms. Duroff. I believe she had been pulled in.
She had, and they said there's something going on with her. I'm getting messages. But she can't hear us.
Okay. I will move on. Ms. Hogan? Yes. Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Next is the Solicitor's Report.
I have no report.
All right, followed by the Report of the President. I similarly do not have anything. Secretary's Report?
No report.
And that brings us to the Superintendent's Report.
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to share my report. I would like to share with the BASD staff, parents, and guardians and community my statement. As a school superintendent in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I took an oath of office as part of my commission to serve as the superintendent of schools for Boyertown Area School District. As a licensed educator, I'm expected to adhere to the Code of Professional Practice and Conduct for Educators, which defines interactions between myself, students, and other professionals within the organization. The code states in part, "Educators recognize their primary responsibility to the student and the development of the student's potential. Centered to that development is educators valuing the worth and dignity of every person, student, and colleague alike, the pursuit of truth, devotion to excellence, acquisition of knowledge, and democratic principles." Also, the code lists at least 17 practices we are to abide by, which include, but are not limited to, the following, and I'm not going to read a whole 17, but, "Educators show respect, the dignity, worth, and uniqueness of each individual student, including but not limited to actual and perceived gender, gender expression, gender identity, civil status, family status, sexual orientation, religion, age, disability, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, and culture. Educators should seek to understand the students' educational, academic, personal, and social needs as well as students' beliefs, values, and cultural backgrounds. Educators shall exhibit consistent and equitable treatment of students, fellow educators, and parents. They shall respect the civil rights of all and not discriminate on the basis of race, national, or ethnic origin, culture, religion, sex, sexual orientation, marital status, age, political beliefs, socioeconomic status, disabling condition, or vocational interest. The list of the basis or discrimination is not all-inclusive and shall respect the civil rights of all. As educators, we shall accept the value of diversity in educational practice. Diversity requires educators to have a range of methodologies and to request the necessary tools for effective teaching and learning. And I would argue that that means understanding microaggressions. Educators shall impart to their students principles of good citizenship and social responsibility. Educators shall exert reasonable effort to protect the student from conditions that interfere with learning or are harmful to the student's health and safety. And we shall promote health, safety, and well-being of students by establishing and maintaining appropriate verbal, physical, emotional, and social boundaries. I also serve as a non-voting member of the school board, a team of 10. The school board is a legislative body of nine citizens called school directors who are elected locally by their fellow citizens and who serve as a governing body of the public school district. School districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are governmental units. They are considered political subdivisions. Because school districts are created by statute, they and their governing bodies are regarded as creatures of the General Assembly or state legislature. And as such, they function, in a sense, as agents of the Commonwealth. Pennsylvania's school laws have evolved greatly since 1834. They were changed to the Common School Laws of 1954, and then ultimately also replaced by Public School Code of 1911, and then to the latter and current day Public School Code of 1949, which is currently the primary compilation of statutes enacted by the legislators focused on public education, its programming, operations, staffing, and management. There are also numerous state and federal statutes outside the school code, rules, regulations of the State Board of Education, standards and guidelines of the Department of Education, the US Department of Education, opinions and interpretations of the State Attorney General, and decisions of the state and federal courts that also regulate how we operate our schools. Like me, each board member of the school board also takes an oath of office stating their willingness to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which actually has a "No Discrimination by the Commonwealth and Political Subdivision" section stating, "Neither the Commonwealth nor any political subdivision thereof shall deny any person the enjoyment of any civil right nor discriminate against any person in the exercise of any civil right." Over the past two months, I've been a part of numerous conversations with colleagues, professional acquaintances, friends, and family, both in-state and out-of-state, regarding the current state of affairs in our country, our state, our county, and yes, our Boyertown community. Earlier this month, I began to receive direct communication from our teachers and staff, some of whom you heard from tonight, seeking an affirmation of the Boyertown Area School District's continued commitment to equality, providing a safe place for students, staff, and visitors, and possible resources for parents to utilize to help foster productive conversations with their children. I also put aside my personal feelings, beliefs, certain experiences over the past 50-plus years, such as being hit with eggs as a high school football player, having been purposely avoided shaking hands with people, being called in-word, or when I previously worked in another Brooks County school district, athletic patrons avoided standing in my line. There was a quarter of the wait time in my principal's line to purchase a football ticket for the same game. And even some incidences during my two years in BASD that have not been so just or equitable in actions or comments for a place that proudly announces we are a No Place For Hate school district. Yes, we made progress, but we have much still left to do. You see, I've experienced actions that are contradictory to that statement, not only as a kid, student, and adult, but even here as a superintendent. I've also had to counsel parents, teachers, and administrators who have dealt with those inappropriate incidences that don't align with our beliefs, values, mission, vision, and goals, and in some cases, our educator code of practices, and find ways to move us forward despite those who would stifle efforts to be inclusionary and accepting of differences. Over time, what I've come to realize is that often the best way to help people feel comfortable talking about and addressing uncomfortable situations related to equity, inclusiveness, and non-discriminatory practices is to try to find points of agreement and commonality rather than to force a square peg in a circle. At least getting them to the table is sometimes the most important thing. So I write this statement with somewhat of a heavy heart, but with a focus on finding some common agreement. I choose to believe that regardless of what is happening outside of Boyertown, we can and should reaffirm our commitment to our oath of office, our educated code of professional practices, our mission, vision, goals, and value statements adopted less than a year ago. We adopted a vision of cultivating an exceptional, innovative learning community that enables all students to succeed in a changing world, not just in Boyertown. We approve goals that stated we would provide positive, safe, and healthy learning environments. We would foster open communication, active involvement, and purposeful collaboration among all members of the BASD learning community. Our value statements of safety and well-being, acceptance and respect, communication and collaboration, as well as learning and growth, have been a part of BASD since at least August 2015. My hope is that we are all willing to reaffirm what we seemingly accepted by taking an oath, accepting our professional responsibilities as educators, adopting our organizational mission, vision, goals, and value statements. To the BASD community, I thank you for the opportunity to serve as your superintendent. I assure you that I am committed to providing our students, staff, and community with a teaching and learning environment that adheres to our vision, mission, goals, value statements, inclusivity, and non-discriminatory actions. At the end of the day, we have to start somewhere that doesn't create more conflict. Thank you. And move on to the Superintendent's Consent Agenda. On the consent agenda, you have Item 9A, the settlement agreement for student number 101711. You have Item 9B, which is the Crest BASD Agreement. Item 9C is a Pasmo BASD Agreement. At this time, I'd like to ask the Board to approve Items 9A, B, and C as part of Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mrs. Denon moves.
Ms. McWhorter, seconds.
We have a first and a second, and since this is consent agenda, we'll move right to a vote.
Mrs. McWhorter? Yes. Mr. Uptegrove?
No.
Mr. Uptegrove?
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff, I'm not sure if she has been brought into the meeting yet. I know they were working with her behind the scenes. I don't see her. So I'm going to move on. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman? Ms. Nyman, I cannot hear you. You look like you're muted. I'm still unable to hear Ms. Nyman. Okay, we'll move on. Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Mr. Sultanic? Claire, I want to get clarification because she did not cast a no vote, but she is showing present. How should she record that, Mr. Sultanic? Is this abstention or does it count as a no vote?
Just recorded as not voted. Just recorded as not voted.
Thank you.
Okay, motion carries six one.
Item number ten is superintendent's itemizing report. We would like to bring to the school directors for consideration for approval the retirement of Carol Sue Bullock, a classified staff member for teachers in the park program for summer twenty twenty. Seven staff members and also for professional staff member for as part of teachers of the park for a non-BAE member, one person. We also like to bring forward a change of employment status of Sandy Kramer, moving from the human resource administrative assistant to the position of administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent. At this time, we will recommend that the board of school directors approve the personal items as presented.
We get a motion on the personnel.
Hogan moves. Denon seconds.
Ms. Denon seconds. Any comments or questions on the personnel item? All right, not hearing any, we'll move to our vote.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptergrove? Mr., there we go.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
I don't think Ms. Deroff is in the meeting yet.
Yes.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Deroff. Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Ms. Nyman says she can't unmute her iPad.
Okay, okay. Mr. Sultanic will be okay if her vote would be communicated through someone else or not?
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, all right. We still have Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Nyman?
Can Ms. Nyman use the chat feature on her phone to indicate? Well, I don't know if there is a chat feature.
I think she's on her iPad. I don't know if the iPads have the chat. Does someone who have an iPad?
I have an iPad.
Ah, Mr. Sultanic.
We're in a webinar format. I don't know if it.
Her vote is a yes.
Her vote's a yes. Thank you, Mr. Brophy. Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
And the next item is the draft district position statement. This is a, this is a statement that was, that was drafted. And the recommended action is that the board adopts this statement as a co-signer with administration to be sent to the school district community. Do we have a motion?
McWhorter motions.
Up to Grove second.
Up to Grove second. Comments or questions on this draft?
I have a question.
Sorry, let me just grab the participant pane so I can see hands. Yes, Mr. Up to Grove, was that you?
I have, as far as my question is, who wrote this?
So it was a joint effort between Ms. Moyer, our communication specialist and board leadership.
Okay.
All right, next I have Ms. Hogan followed by Ms. Denon.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to thank all of the community members who spoke and I'd like to tell them that I see them, I hear them and I value them. So tonight I prepared a statement, which I have never done before for a school board meeting, but I wanted to make sure that I got to say everything the way I wanted to say it. So I'm going to read it. In reflecting upon the struggles we as a nation have faced over the last few weeks, I was reminded of a quote by Thomas Jefferson. In a letter to John Holmes discussing the Missouri Compromise, Jefferson wrote, "But this momentous question, like a fire bell in the night, awakened and filled me with terror. I considered it at once as the knell of the Union. It is hushed indeed for the moment, but this is a reprieve only, not a final sentence." Jefferson wrote those words two hundred years ago in April of eighteen twenty. He was speaking about the compromise that expanded slavery into Missouri. And yet I can't help but feel the echo of his words today. Our country has erupted into chaos following the death of George Floyd in May. We have seen many peaceful protests where brave Americans are exercising their right to assemble and petitioning the government for change. We have also seen some criminal acts, the burning of American cities and a hefty amount of anger and outrage. As Martin Luther King said, "A riot is the language of the unheard." What America has failed to hear, the suffering of its people of color, has turned into a roar. It is time that we all stop and listen. Some of you may be asking, how does this relate to the education of children in Boyertown? My answer is, how could it not? Ending racism starts with education. It starts with creating inclusive and safe spaces where children feel valued. And it starts with truthful and open discussions about the realities faced, not only by people of color, but by all of America's people when faced with the plague of racism on our democracy. I believe that the proposed statement affirming BASD's commitment to inclusion and the safety of its students is a good first step, but more needs to be done. Boyertown has a reputation as a racist community, earned in part by the Ku Klux Klan rallies that took place in our town through the nineteen nineties and continued racial incidents that still occur today. Statements are not enough. It is time for action. We saw our community take action in early June when hundreds of people came together to attend a locally planned rally in support of racial equality and justice. Many of these protesters were students who attend Boyertown schools. They have had enough and have been brave enough to raise their voices in protest. They are the future and they want change. Change starts with education. I am asking my colleagues and the administration to hear them and to help them. I propose we form a committee that addresses diversity, equity and inclusion in our schools, made up of stakeholders, students and adult representatives of the BASD. Work centered around intentional efforts of diversity, equity and inclusion have been happening in schools, workplaces and communities around our country for years.
We have reached the three minutes for our policy. Are you?
I have one last sentence. Do you mind?
It's over.
It's time for the BASD to step up our efforts. Thank you.
It's over.
Thank you. So that was Ms. Hogan. I have Ms. Denon. I saw your hand, but it's no longer up. Are you still?
Yes, I just put it down because you saw my hand was up.
All right, Ms. Denon and then Ms. McWhorter.
Thank you, Mr. Foose. I support this statement, although I would have liked it to have been stronger. And I would ask that my fellow board members stand with our administration in voting to accept it. As school district leaders, we have a responsibility to ensure that all students and staff feel safe and feel, students and staff feel a sense of belonging and acceptance in our schools. And most importantly, can learn and teach in an environment where they feel safe. Finally, it is my personal hope that we will incorporate lessons, new curriculums and programs that advance BASD's core values. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have Ms. McWhorter.
Thank you. And thank you to everyone who has sent emails and those who spoke tonight. I appreciate your thoughts and opinions. I too support the statement that has been drafted. I would have preferred something stronger, but this is what we came up with. There has been so much going on in the, in the area locally, at the state level, at the national level about the rights of our black neighbors and colleagues. And we need to let them know that our schools are safe. They're a safe place to be, that they, it's a learning environment and they should be comfortable here. Yeah, I just, I don't have a prepared statement like Mrs. Denon and Mrs. Hogan, but I do. We've made progress in the Boyertown community. We still have a long ways to go. That's it.
Thank you. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands at the moment. So I'll take this opportunity to say a couple of words as well. So this, this statement was a drafted as a joint effort and in an attempt to try to strike a balance because there, there was and continues to be some disagreement. My, my personal opinions aside, I feel that the, the statement is aimed at, as has been pointed out, highlighting our, our current policies, practices and programs, which I think are things that, that we would likely, I think it's safe and fair to say that we agree that those are appropriate. Otherwise, we'd be having discussions about, about those particular items. So I think providing the, the reassurance at, at a time like this when there is so much going on, this is such a unique period in history, not only because of what we're witnessing on our televisions and in our communities, but also just the very nature of the fact that, that people are at home. We had such an abrupt end to our school year. And upon returning, I think that there will be some trepidation for any number of reasons and that it's as, as a district and as a board, I think it's, it's right and appropriate for us to give that reassurance to all of our students and staff that this is an inclusive environment, that we will uphold these policies. I do agree that there is likely more work to be done in part because when, when asking about some of the things like the no place for hate program, which started several years after I graduated while my younger sister was in school as a result of a cross burning on the lawn of a Boyertown student at that time. We have come a long way. I've experienced a lot of what has been shared by others as well. And I, I believe that there is continued work because as I said, the new place for hate program seems to not necessarily be very impactful or as impactful as it, as it maybe was intended at this point, as we've moved further away from, from its original inception in, in our district. I, I, I think that some of what, what maybe could be done to have those conversations and drive those types of activities would be things that maybe we can discuss at, at committee meetings or, or, or even the, the administration and staff to, to be looking to, to let us know what, what more we can do. And similarly for, for, for us as a board to continue to, to listen and to be active listeners to community members like those who spoke tonight and, and many others to really kind of take in and digest all of what we're hearing. All right, so with that, seeing no other comments or questions, we will move this to a vote. And a vote in affirmation would be to have this statement sent out as a joint board and administration document and otherwise would be not to do so.
Mrs. McWhorter?
Yes.
Mr. Uptergrove?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Ruth Deroff, text, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Denon?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman, does someone have Ms. Nyman's vote?
She votes yes.
Thank you. Mr. Foose?
Yes.
Motion carries nine zero.
All right, with that, we will move to public commentary number two. And there was, I did receive an email that there was no one signed up for public commentary number two, which means we can move to the board comments. I will again try to open the participant pane, see the hands. All right, I don't see anybody looking to get in the queue.
Brandon, I can't put my hand up as usual.
Sure, Mr. Brophy, go ahead.
I just have a question. It's, it's part of the consent agenda. It's something I didn't, that I'm, I'm not sure if I read it correctly. We, didn't we move someone up at the last meeting in the HR department to run the HR department? And now I see from PSBO, we are bringing in someone also to run the HR department. Am I reading that wrong?
You received your weekly report that you were giving a additional stipend for the person to actually be doing additional work along and you have a part-time person from Pasmo who's helping. Can you all hear me?
Okay, yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
No, something bizarre just happened with my screen. I can't see any of you all and I just want to make sure we just didn't get hacked or something.
No, you're still there. No, I understand now. So the additional stipend was, was not to run the group. It was to do additional duties.
Correct. Okay. Right, you have, you, you, what you may be. what you may be commingling is, you have a July 1, Ms. Chambers is a manager, but she's actually doing both her job and a little bit of Dr. Kim's, and we just have a part-time support person from outside of Pasbo with a limit of only 25 hours a week, if you're.
Okay. That's fine. I just wanted to understand how that was working. I wasn't, I wasn't sure I was reading it correctly. I want to make sure it was not incorrect in my interpretation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? If you're not able to get your hand up, feel free to just let me know. All right, hearing none, we can.
Mr. Foose, because my screen is blocked and I don't want to do anything that'll knock everybody off, just remind everyone that you will, should have received the other link, and then I have to launch the meeting, and then I will be to pass the host capabilities over to you to exit out.
Right. Is that clear for the rest of the members? They understand what's going on after we conclude this?
Yes.
All right, so I'll move to upcoming meeting dates. We do have a meeting next week, same time on the 23rd, where we will be looking at the final budget. And the rest of our meetings are, continue to be listed on the website calendar. We will be, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, but we will be moving to executive session. Mr. Sultanic, how would you, is this legal on personnel?
It is listed as, the notes, the notes in the minutes, in the label says, "Legal advice for personnel matter."
Okay, that's fine. We will not be returning. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Hogan motions.
McWhorter seconds.
Motion and second, so we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.